Good evening, and I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting on the Board of Trustees. Today is Tuesday, July 23rd, 2024. For Smith's Vocational Agricultural High School, may I have a call to order?
Mr. Kayley?
Present.
Dr. Spence Robinson?
Here.
Dr. Bonner?
Here.
Mr. Quadro is due in, Mayor Ciara is absent tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The mission statement for Smith's Vocational Agricultural High School is to prepare students for social responsibility, employment, and post-secondary education through rigorous applied technical and academic programs. Is there any participation by the public tonight? Seeing none, participation by the trustees? Move on. May I have a motion in second to approve the minutes of the June 11th, 24th Board of Trustees meeting?
So who?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Turn it over to Superintendent.
Good morning, everybody, happy summer. Mr. Chuck Brennan, overall relatively short report to share with all of you this evening. Under instructional leadership, just as a reminder, in the summer, we have the Advent team does its annual planning retreat. We have that scheduled for July 30th, so next Tuesday. That's going to be on campus this year. Over in the White House, we'll just have our general sort of an intensive leadership meeting throughout the day, planning for the upcoming year, and then that afternoon, they have some team-building opportunities.
Why did you decide to have it on campus instead of?
So I actually put a vote out to the leadership team, a couple of different options and consensus was this be on campus.
Good for you for soliciting your input.
Yeah, that's not my wheelhouse, event planning, so I mean on that. Staffing needs, I know Mr. Biaka, this week is his family vacation week, so I just wanted to update the board on current staffing that we have. We'll be looking for an electrical instructor, culinary instructor, along from sub-in culinary, a biology instructor, a paraprofessional, and the administrative assistant to the superintendent. Those are the current needs that we have at this moment, for the busy summer. Under management and operations?
Can I just ask a question about how? I know that you always ask for participation from employees on the, as part of the hiring teams. How, with hiring for all these positions, how has that gone? Is it, are you able to?
Oh, yes, yeah. So I believe biology, as an example, the biology physician, they had their sample teaching lessons, I think that was happening yesterday, and they were having over in one of the classrooms, so that was going well on the vocational side. They haven't started with the electrical instructor, the culinary instructor. I know today there were some interviews for the long-term sub-physician, but there's definitely enough interest.
And how would you say the applicant pools are for the different positions?
I think biology was okay. Culinary, I'm pleasantly surprised with the number of qualified applicants. I haven't looked at the paraprofessional position yet. Electrical is not out there officially yet, probably in the next couple of days. The administrative assistant to the superintendent, I was pleasantly surprised at the number of applicants.
Okay, good.
Keep our fingers crossed.
So far, so good?
Yes.
Great.
We don't have any accepted options yet, so it's still early.
Right, but knowing that there's good involvement from the staff and the healthy applicant pool, that's great.
So management and operations, just to give the board a brief update, I know Mr. Smith is not here as well, but just to give the board an update in the Horticulture Building, so if you've had an opportunity to drive down back or near the construction site, it truly is now a construction site. There's no more parking lot, you'll see a lot of dirt being moved around, a lot of heavy equipment. But Murphy's Law has found a drear's ugly head with this particular project. We do have two issues that we're trying to deal with that have come to light over the last week, week and a half. We had a weekly construction meeting earlier today to address both of these needs. I do want to thank the overall team, the debate and back and forth and discussion that we've had, some follow-up conversations since that meeting. I just want to give the board a total transparency on what's going on. The first one is with an electrical issue. So the animal science building, the former parking rec building, you know, that white building's still down there, the main electrical feed that feeds that particular building comes from the same service panel that feeds most of the complex down back. Most of the official site plans that we had, so during the design phase, we have to know where all the power lines are, the water lines, the sewer lines, and so on and so forth before we agree on a construction project. None of the site plans had the official location of where that power line happened to be. Through our best guesses and, you know, leaning on Tim Smith, we thought we knew where the power line was, but again, out of respect for Tim, that was all done well before his tenure as well. So Kiter begins to do the site prep, starts pulling up all the dirt and everything else, and lo and behold, that main power line is literally bullseye. And when I say bullseye, I'm talking bullseye right through the middle of where the new building's going to be. So that's an issue. So we've talked about alternatives. One option was to simply leave it where it is, and there's ways to work around it, I don't get into the technicalities, but it could potentially introduce some issues long-term. As you remember, you know, our goal, our vision is to have an expansion of that building down the road when we have more funding to add the head house, the new greenhouse. Having that, that power line under the building could introduce issues then. And not only would it also potentially cause issues if we have an issue with the power line and it happens to be under a $7 million building, what do you do at that point? So ideally, we want to move the wire. Next question is, where do we move it? So there were really three options during the meeting today, we were talking about two options. After the meeting, we revisited an original option, which we're actually moving towards now, bottoming below its cost effective. But we're talking about running the wire up along the football field, right on the edge there, and dropping it back down into the animal science, that was one option we looked at. Another option was that we run it all down along the farm road, okay, that's a very long route. And then the third option that we revisited after the meeting today, which was the original idea, was to sort of run it along the base of the hill, kind of hug the new building, and get beyond the new building, get beyond the potential new construction, okay, that next phase, and then get it into animal science. And the electrician who is on, on this particular project, he actually signed up on that. He thought that was going to be the best idea as well. I thought we may have a quote this afternoon, I'm sure we have a quote, it just never got to my level this afternoon, so I can't tell you that. But as you can imagine, the price of copper is through the roof, and we're just trying to find the most cost-effective way, and they're actually looking at going from copper to aluminum, which would be a cost savings as well, so.
And what did the engineers think about that, and what did ML Schmidt think about that? I don't necessarily like that idea.
That was Schmidt's idea.
To go to aluminum?
Yeah.
And, well, we've got to do a little homework on that, the conductivity of aluminum's nothing like copper, I don't think, blah, 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 but let's, let's look into it.
Right.
So I know when I was part of the meeting this morning, we talked about the hill, and we had some reservations there, but we feel we can keep it just beyond the footprint of the building. We've got to excavate for the footings and walls anyways, right?
And that was possible.
So no matter what's there, we're going to be excavating anyways, right?
Correct.
Okay, and then that leads into your other issue, and we'll let Andy get into that. So that, that sounds like a viable solution.
Correct.
So I think we'll have that answer most likely tomorrow.
And in my opinion, we'd be foolish to leave the line under the building. God forbid we have a problem with it down the road.
Yeah, nobody's in favor of that, right?
Could you explain to me how, how it, how we didn't know that it was there? So I'm not looking to point fingers or to blame anybody, but I just, I wonder how that, you know, this is a piece of public property, right, that there must be some kind of historical records in terms of, you know, like the property's been surveyed. I know if I, you know, if I wanted to build something on my property, DigSafe would come and use whatever they used to see where the lines are.
So the public, the public property basically ends at the top of the hill, so once it got down back there, it turned into what they would consider private property.
What, who would consider, like this city?
Or DigSafe Utilities.
Gotcha.
Let me jump in here, please. So the, the design team would do their due diligence, pulling up any records we have. Tim met with them and brought them on board. Yes, it's unfortunate, it's a valid question. Everybody, as best we can tell, did their homework, and needless to say, we had an unforeseen condition.
So it was in that kind of no persons zone where it wasn't?
Well, we knew, Tim knew there was a line through there somewhere.
But we didn't have really?
We thought it was further south, more into the parking lot side, not where it was.
And getting to this next issue with the soils, well, I'll let him go there, but unfortunately, this stuff happens. As much as you try to cover all your bases now, and just as, as a sidebar, they're doing this big project, it's not a big project, but it's an important project to UMass Amherst, and they, the same type of thing, the whole deal, they've just uncovered a contaminated soil with all the testing in the world, it's terrible, it's, okay.
It's a great segue. So last, I think it was last Thursday, I was notified as, I say Kiter, Hatfield Construction is sort of the subsidiary of Kiter. They're the actual company doing the site prep work. They were doing some digging to prepare for the footings, for the foundation, and they came across what they identified as organic matter, that was in quotation marks.
Which sounds like that's what you would expect, isn't everything organic, dirt and trees and?
Depends on what you want to define as organic.
But I'm thinking it's bad, in this case.
Potentially.
Well, it doesn't have any structural stability for building, a building on top of it.
It's soft soil, it's soft soil.
Yeah, it's organic.
So you need inorganic soil?
All right, organic's meaning like vegetation, mainly vegetation, you know, decayed leaves, twigs, logs, whatever. Animal waste, you know, my first thought was, was it cow manure somehow?
No.
But letting it be.
So you can't build on top of organic?
It's a soft soil.
Well, we didn't, as of last Thursday, last Thursday and Friday, we didn't.
It has to be compactable.
So, so we called out the environmental consultant that we use to do some core tests during the whole design phase, because we want to know what type of soil we're dealing with. So they, they do drill, look like basically an auger, they take some samples, and, you know, that process, we did our due diligence, didn't see anything that was abnormal. They dig four test pits last Thursday or Friday, three out of the four test pits had this organic matter that they were, they saw that didn't belong there necessarily, so we sent it out for testing. At today's meeting, we had the company at the meeting, and the organic matter that we identified was basically ash. Several feet deep of ash and several feet down. So the question is, is it contaminated or not? That's question number one.
Meaning that it would have to be, like, removed specially?
Moved and mitigated and talk about money.
Yeah.
And then question number two, Rick's referring to, is just the stability of that to hold a structure, to support a structure.
So something was burned there?
So. Go ahead.
I lived down the road, 100-plus-year-old house, they had an incinerator in the basement. And my garden beds all around the foundation of the house is ash. People burned, and they just dump stuff in the ground, it's buried in, and that's probably exactly what happened out here.
And again, back then, coal burning furnaces were more popular, that could be just dumping the ash and that. Any number of rational excuses for it.
What is the cost to rectify that?
Or work on it.
And what's the process, like, would you, do you like remove it and replace it?
Yes.
So that's the next part of my lovely story today.
Okay, I mean, it's just too bad. Not surprising, especially on a piece of property that has this kind of history, but.
So question number one was, are we talking about contaminated soil? When I first heard organic, my first thought was cow manure, and then my second thought was, with the other things that we're finding buried back there, are we talking about something petroleum product? Luckily, it's not the contamination as far as petroleum-based products, so that's a check in the win column. But the bigger issue is, the experts do not believe it is sustainable for supporting a structure. So now what do we have to do? So in essence, we do have to excavate it out, we have to pull it out. And then we have to bring in a new construction, construction building.
Graded gravel.
That will support the, the foundation and the building, which obviously there's a cost there. So we are getting a quote on that. One, potential cost savings, because we have the opportunity, as Hatfield Construction removes this particular soil, if we keep it on property, it can be reburied, and that is okay with all the regulations. So we are working on what that would look like, I'm trying to find a way to make that happen. Because if we actually dispose of it off property, so we pay for it to be removed, we may then have to run into the stipulations of testing it and its higher costs. So if there's a way that we can remove it from the construction site, put it someplace else on the property, but it has to be buried, that is totally illegal. So I am pushing hard that way.
Yeah, the, the soils expert, Mike Talbot from OTO, O'Reilly Talbot and whatever, indicated it's, it's an ash product, and there's some wording in the regulations in regards to this, because it is prevalent in a lot of places, that in general, he's saying not contaminated, just, it's just ash. It's just a burnt byproduct of whatever wood, paper, and, and the indicated could be just redistributed somewhere on campus, buried, and we wouldn't have a whole trucking disposal fee. So that's being looked at.
Neither of those, neither of these issues warrants considering another location on campus for the building?
There is no other viable, except knocked out.
No, it's not, it's not.
And my worry, what we're finding in this particular site won't be fine in this other site, I think.
So there is also some debris mixed in that would have to be culled out, like some pieces of metal. At one point, when they took the tree down, there is what, some type of steel tank or something? Maybe a compressor tank or something? And thank God that wasn't petroleum-filled or oil-filled. So that stuff would have to be picked out, which isn't a big deal, so fingers crossed, that's hoping what we're able to do.
So what are the options, speaking of that? If you walk the site, you, you see things sticking out, you see pipes and you see glass, it's, it's litter down there. If we were to reuse, so one of the discussions today was, if we were able to somehow still reuse this or on the construction site in certain ways, we're still dealing with all of this metal and whatnot. So then there'd be a process to have to sift it through, screen it, then separate everything. Unfortunately, the job site is too small, they can't do that within the job site. And then, then you start talking about moving it someplace else on campus, there's a lot of labor and equipment usage, the cost goes up. So it's, doesn't sound logical, but it's logical that it's easier for us just to simply remove it, we can bury it someplace else, and we bring in new, new fill, and then we can move on.
I just, I can't picture it, in my mind, I think we have space down there going towards what, the orchards or whatever, and, and I've got to imagine Hatfield Construction has some type of screening process, screening mechanism.
I've already allowed that spot, if you go down there, there's probably 40.
All right, there's stuff in the way.
All the topsoil that they scraped off, there was no, even though they, they had a spot within the construction site to store the topsoil, it wasn't large enough, so I allowed them to move it over.
All right, they're not already, space is already taken, is what you're getting at. Okay, thank you.
So that's what was dealt with us, you know, the last week and a half, so I want to let the board know, right now, the early estimate, and this is an unofficial estimate, this is talking to Schoolhouse today, we are thinking between the electrical movement and the site improvement, we're anticipating probably upwards of $50,000 to handle both of these.
Oh, okay, that's a much better number, I was already in the millions.
No.
I don't know how much that'll cost.
No, okay, point taken. And, and if I did ask, I texted Andy and Craig, our OPM, during the meeting, what our budgeted contingency is, and I believe Craig responded, and he thinks it's 250, is that accurate?
230, 250, somewhere in that range.
Right, so that's, that's built into our budget, and any project like this needs a 2% to 5%, even, even higher, depending upon how many unknowns you think you might have, but I think we budgeted appropriately.
And also, in the report, I just said, I'm trying to avoid a contingency fee as much as possible. We're one month into the job, and I don't want to be dipping into it already.
That's discouraging to have that, these issues.
And I already rejected a couple of requests that came to me that we could talk offline if necessary, so I'm trying to save that as much as possible. But there are some other potential credits slash cost savings that we've already identified, and I just want to share with the board, to hopefully put our minds a little bit more at ease that one week into construction, basically, we have this major issue here potentially. But we do have a cost savings in the fiber optics run, it's a shorter run than initially anticipated, so we are going to get a credit on that, I can't put a dollar figure on it. The second one is the sprinkler design. SMMA, which is our, the architects, they've asked Kiter to price out some alternative options around the sprinkler design, more on the classroom side of the building. So again, remember, it's a basic rectangle, one side is shop area, the other side is classroom area. They think there's a way to redesign the sprinkler system and save some money there. So we're waiting on, on those estimates back from Kiter, but we do anticipate savings. And then the generator?
All right, I'm a little confused by that one. The sprinkler coverage is well-defined by code, so what are they thinking?
And how did it come to their attention?
SMMA internally was reviewing the designs and trying to see if there's other ways to save some money, and this was one. So right now, the classroom side, basically, you'll have your drop ceiling, and then the sprinkler system is basically up over the head. They think that might be ways to treat the, that side, treat the trusses, so to be more fire retardant, so we can cut back on some of it. I think there's three or four different options that they've identified. As of today, they asked Kiter, the project manager from Kiter, if he's had an opportunity to price it out. He was honest, he said he hasn't had a chance because he's been dealing with these two, other two issues.
All right, so they, has SMMA put forth a, an official change order request?
They, they put forward these four options that would pass all code, and they've asked Kiter to come back and please quote, give us a quote for these four.
So it's formally done, it wasn't just kind of talked around the table?
Correct.
All right.
So well done, SMMA.
Hopefully.
We appreciate that, that they're paying attention to it.
And then the generator, the way the generator is working out, we think there's going to be a cost savings overall with that particular piece too, so that's a positive respect. Any questions on this, that's the Horticulture Building? Okay, and obviously, we'll keep you updated as time goes on. The companion animal building, we are probably in the 11th hour of completion. If you have a chance to drive down back, the retaining wall is just about done. We've had two times that we've run out of the retaining wall blocks, so we're waiting for the final delivery. Tim and his crew have been actively raising the elevation of the outdoor run, so then we can get the fence up, so that's moving along, it's looking great. If you go inside, as of today, they were, this week, they've been doing all the trim work around the windows. We're still waiting on a delivery of some of the, the plastic fiber board that we're going to line the walls to be more water-resistant. The electrician was there today installing outlets, so we're moving along.
And who's that?
We usually use Orchard over this.
Orchard, yeah, Joe Kachowski.
Talking to Tim this morning, we are on track to be open for the fall. We are doing the floor with that Epoxy floor, so we're hoping to do that in late August, so.
The same system you use down here, the animal science?
Yes, yes.
And they should be experts in that now, they had a little learning curve from last time.
Right.
And it all came out well, yes.
They did automotive related, they did color occlusions related, they did B-building?
After they did animal?
Animal came after, but they.
They learned some lessons there, I know that.
Yes.
Okay.
Dr. L, are you thinking about having like a ribbon-cutting ceremony for the building? I think that would be spectacular, like, that, like, it's such a point of pride, and that it was done internally, and, you know, Tim leading it, and to celebrate the accomplishments of everybody that contributed to it.
Yeah, we've got to take the accolades wherever we can, absolutely.
Feel like that, good news.
Yeah.
And it is something to be proud of.
Fight the press, invite the TV station, you know, we got it, we get it, we're out.
So that's some good, some good news there. And then finally, as of this morning, the sidewalk project around B-Building has officially begun, and that was being paid for through the City Capital Improvement, so you'll see a new beautiful sidewalk around B-Building before you know it.
Are they using granite curves?
They are, yes.
They're everywhere in the city.
So those were delivered, they're in the side parking lot, so.
Yeah, if you can go granite curves, it's a way to go, they last longer, they, they take a beating. Pre-cast concrete curve will, will fall apart, blacktop curve even worse. But, you know, there's an upfront cost, but I think life expectancy of the granite is probably cheaper in the long run.
Looks good too.
Yeah, exactly.
So family and community engagement, I want to think the leadership team, they are working on the clock to finalize all of the opening of school activities, so before you know it, we'll be back. And I already mentioned the Advent Retreat that will be happening next week, so we will outline the newsletter topics for this coming school year. Back before the school year ended, I just want to report it to the board, I was invited to present to the MDR, that's the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources, their board meeting. All of the ag schools were invited to present, so it was a great opportunity, just to, again, showcase sophistication of what we do, and then listen to the other Aggies as well. What was surprising to me, unfortunately, was the number of board members that were completely unaware that there were ag schools in the state. So it was an educational opportunity for us to inform them that we exist.
All right, how many are there in the state?
There's four.
Four?
When you said you spoke to the board, I was like, like, it has a board, and I'm like, oh, like Dussie has a board, MDR has a board.
Right.
So who is on the board, is it?
So Commissioner Ashley Randall is the.
Right, of course, like Secretary Tellaro, and Commissioner.
And I'm not sure how, the individuals who spoke, there were a couple from Western Mass, they, they, seems to me, mostly are all involved in the agricultural industry, so farmers of some sort.
And you, you're saying they, some were aware that we had?
Some came out, I did not know you folks existed.
How about that? Well, great for you for going and raising the awareness.
All right, I'm done, I'm sorry. MDR, Mass Department Agricultural Resources, okay, that's a state agency.
Sure.
And we know who Ashley is, we've had her out here, that was great. And you said there's four Aggies in the state, are they combination like us?
There's only two of us that are a combination, and there's two. There's only two of us that are a combination, and there's two that are truly county-based, only ag.
Two combination, and where are the two aggie only?
So Bristol County, that covers Bristol County, that's sort of South Shore. You got Norfolk County, so basically the next county north, again, sort of south of Boston. And then you have Essex North Shore, Voltec Ag, very long name.
All right, now, who were the two aggie only?
Bristol County and Norfolk County.
And Norfolk, okay. And so Bristol's further south, South Shore.
Yes.
And then next above it is Norfolk?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And then the two combos are?
Us and then Essex, which is northeast corner, Danvers, Gloucester.
And they're the ones that got that fancy new building somewhere in Bristol, often?
Yeah, it's Boston, yes.
It's like Shangri-La.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And you just can't believe.
Yeah, Bristol's presentation at the same MDR meeting is just amazing, what they have now through the campus. I've been there a few times before the construction project was done, and Bristol reminded me a lot of Sniff, very old New England-style architecture, both sides of the road, campus feel, but was definitely old, but a great school. And now it is, is beautiful now. And same with that, Essex. Essex is relatively new, I think they opened the new campus in 2014.
Yeah.
It's beautiful.
Okay, thank you.
The last day of school, again, with this being the family and community engagement, I can't thank the PTO enough. And Joe and I used to talk about this a lot. At the high school level, we oftentimes had very minimal input from, and support from the PTOs, and our PTO has to be one of the best, and I can't say that enough. They put on amazing luncheon for the staff. And what's amazing is most of the PTO members are parents of former students, but they just, they stay on, they continue to support the school, which is great. So I'll put a call out to, you know, any new parents who want to join the PTO and support, but they do a great job, so thank you to them. And then lastly, I want to thank Dr. Spencer Robinson, we met with the mayor and finance director at NARBY, a couple weeks ago now, down at the mayor's office, just to begin the conversation that we had at the last board meeting around de-building, you know, what is the potential around a de-building, construction, start strategizing on some of those options. So I think it was a good, healthy, an hour, hour and a half long meeting, so. So professional culture.
Oh, excuse me, sir.
Yep.
Any outcome from that meeting? I know it was very preliminary.
I'm going to report on it when we have committee reports.
Great, thank you.
Yep. Unless you want to, I'm sorry.
No, no, I think it's probably a better time. So under professional culture, I've had the opportunity to attend two conferences since the last board meeting. The first one is Success Conference, that's the MAVA, that's our annual conference held down at Assam Valley in Marlboro. And I just listed out the sessions I was able to attend. You know, the first one was revitalizing and structuring the CTE program. And it was fascinating, the presenter was an actual CTE instructor, and many of his suggestions and recommendations are recommendations as an advent team we've talked about. So it was great to hear the same recommendations, but it was from a different perspective. It came from a teacher in his experience of being hired to go into a program that has been struggling. So from the vantage point of a new teacher in a struggling program, how does he succeed? How does he overcome those struggles? And it was a really interesting session, so I was just happy to be there for that. We also have our MAVA Board of Directors meeting at the conference, it's the last one of the year. So I am now officially off the board, not off the board, officially not an officer anymore, thank goodness. And then I was able to attend, we had two teachers, several teachers attend the conference, but two of them actually presented at the conference, and I wanted to attend both sessions, just to support the teachers and see how they did. The first one I attended was from Mr. Brewer, one of our criminal justice instructors. That's the session he presented on, basically collaborating, how do you engage the students? And he did a great job. The attendees really got involved, a lot of laughing and joking, but a lot of very simple strategies that he shared with the attendees, and that was great. Building the future of the vital wall of the construction craft laborers program, that was an interesting session. This is sort of part of the Mass DOT apprenticeship program that we have here on campus in the fall. The Mass DOT uses a training facility in Hopkinton that is owned and ran by the Construction Craft Laborers Union. And it was an interesting session, it was great, I'll do that. I then attended a session on proper planning for your retirement. And then lastly, the second teacher who was presenting was Ms. Daniels from cosmetology, and I was definitely a fish out of water, but I was learning about hybrid lightening cosmetology techniques. And she did a great job, too. I was impressed. It was a smaller turnout, because it was very, obviously, industry-specific to cosmetology, compared to Joe's was more broad, but I think she did a great job, great discussion with the other cosmetology instructors that were there. So I applaud both of them.
I have a question for you, speaking to this sort of larger aspect of your work. So can you tell us a little bit about why you wanted to be a MAVA officer, and what that experience was like for you, and why you're glad you're not anymore? It seems like you're glad, but I'd like to know especially about why you wanted to take on the leadership role.
I was volatile.
Oh.
I'm sorry, you were what?
Volatile.
I love it.
That's a word.
By a previous president?
No, a previous executive director.
Exactly.
Basically said, Andy, you're taking the lead.
I think you'd be great, would love to have your voice, you're a great person.
But you have to consent, I mean, you have to, right? So tell us why.
I think just getting involved at that level, having a voice and an ear at the state level, I think is very beneficial. Obviously, I think it's been a very contentious time period in the state around CTE, so having that, the ear and the voice of the commissioner at the time, Jeff Riley, having more personal connections with the Desi staff, attending those meetings, having them here on campus, I think is very beneficial. So my own personal, professional growth as a superintendent, I think improved, but I think just my ability to advocate for the school and to bring information back to the school so we can try to stay ahead of the curve, I think was beneficial.
And what will be your relationship to MAVA going forward?
So I'll be a board of director, so their bylaws state that all superintendents of the vocational schools are CEOs, because, you know, we do allow the comprehensive schools to be members of MAVA, so think about a Westfield Tech or a Chican Cup, they're a school in a larger public district.
Yeah.
Oftentimes, that superintendent would not be going to a MAVA meeting, as they oftentimes will designate either the CTE director or principal or somebody from that vocational school to be part of it. So we're all board, we're all members of the board of directors. So I'll still be attending all those meetings, have a say, but I will have the smaller officer meetings with the Desi staff.
Right. So it's sort of like with the Collaborative for Educational Services, where the board for that is made up of a school committee representative from every single member district?
Yes, that's probably the best analogy, yes.
All right, I'm going to piggyback on Dr. Gouley's questions. So your term is up, could you have done another term, or is there some bylaw against?
No, so the bylaws are set up where you, when you're nominated as incoming officer, you become the secretary that first year. And then, I'm not going to say you graduate, because I think each of the jobs are very important, but you progress through all of the officer roles. So secretary, then treasurer, then you're supposed to be vice president, and then president-elect, president, and a past president. But during my tenure, you know, we went through an executive director change, and there was some turnover because of that, and we had a resignation from an officer, so I skipped a year. I skipped that vice president.
You skipped the job, or the position.
So a six-year commitment turned into a five-year commitment.
It's a really good model for leadership training.
Yeah.
Yes.
A lot of those.
Does MASS have the same kind of, no?
Well...
They have, I know they have the president, past president.
And they have vice president, I'm not sure how many vice pres, yeah. We just heard the nominations at the conference.
I know, I didn't really pay attention.
So the new incoming vice president happens to be a superintendent from a vocational school, so we will have a voice.
Which school?
Old Colony.
Great.
Okay.
So the next office was last week, speaking of, MASS, this is the larger superintendent association for the state. So these are the sessions I was able to attend. Really, the basic difference in methodology between Connecting for Success and the MASS conference. Connecting for Success has one smaller keynote, and then a lot of breakouts. And MASS is sort of the opposite, you know, there's a lot of sort of centralized general sessions in the auditorium, and then more in the afternoon, you may have some breakouts if you get to those. So the first keynote was Dr. Mina Scott, I'll come back to him, I have a few videos I want to share with the board. And then, again, Using Data Cycles to Create Sustainability and Raise Equity Access and Leadership, that was sort of a case, not a case study, but sharing out in a particular district. The acting commissioner Johnson, Russell Johnson, came down and shares some updates with Desi. Project 351, Project 351 is a student organization, sort of their vision is that you have representation from all 351 communities in Massachusetts. And they do a wonderful job every summer down at the conference. Really is a highlight to listen to the students and what they're doing.
It's a new program.
Yes, it really is.
Stay wide.
Another keynote is Amanda Ripley, she's a renowned journalist, and her focus was around high conflict, and really talking about conflict, and there's a difference between good conflict and bad conflict in essence, and sort of digging into that, and what is the difference, and how do we as leaders, district new leaders, school committees, boards, trustees, how do we, you know, deal with that conflict? So she had a lot of great insight. Another session was Learning With and From One Another, Advancing Equity for Students. This is around the diversity work that we're all working on, so that was nice to get some updates and some ideas. The other one was Getting the Message Right During a Crisis. This was put on by one of the public relations firms, and just, you know, as life happens, and things happen within a district, how do we get messaging out during that particular crisis? So that was, I think, some good ideas. We had the opportunity to receive some updates from AASA, which is the National Association, also just the updates from Washington, what's happening when it comes to just schools in general, about funding and whatnot. There was a session on negotiation strategies, I think most districts, you know, this is one of the things that we all have to work through, so what's happening across the state. And then another session that I was able to attend was the Secretary of Education, Tuttweiler, you know, he's always a great presenter, student-focused, he, it's always nice to listen to him and his updates. So I want to go back to Dr. Mina Scott. So I'll give you a quick synopsis of who he is in three very short videos, just to allow you to hopefully get a better sense of what we were able to experience. So there was a movie back in 2007, Freedom Riders. Hillary Swank, I believe, was the actress's name, she was the lead actress. She was based on a true story, she came from a very wealthy family. Her father, I believe, was the general manager of the Anaheim Angels back in the day. She was supposed to become a lawyer, and then she decided, I want to be a lawyer, I want to be a teacher. So she became a teacher, an English teacher, and she got a job in one of the worst high schools in the LA area. And she struggled, and how to connect with the students, and how did she create that engagement with the students, and she finally figured it out. In essence, she became a student of the students, and she started winning them over, and the students began, you know, started coming out of the shelves. And, you know, one of the students in that first classroom was Mina Scott. And his story, I won't speak proportion about it, I'm sitting in the back, I'm literally just, I'm crying. His story was that impactful, what he went through as a young man, drop out, went back, so on and so forth, and obviously, you see there's a doctor in front of his name, so he found his way. So he was amazing as far as just his story in general. He was amazing as far as his presentation skills and his theatrical ability to really share his story. But then some of the points he made towards the end of, as educators, as administrators, what can we do, you know, how do we find the Mina Scots of the world, basically, in our classes or in our shops, and they're everywhere, okay? And he kind of ended with this message around being salty, because it was interesting, as he's presenting, I was thinking to myself, great message, great point, but how do we get students to buy in? Okay, and I've often, I've oftentimes told teachers, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink, okay? And I'm literally thinking this during the presentation, and then he talks about that. He talks about, you know, you know, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make a drink. So then he talks about, you know, one of his presentations out in Texas, long story short, there's an analogy, there's a rancher out in Texas raises his hand, and says, you know, but you can give the horse a salt lick. And the idea is, yeah, you can't make a horse drink, but if you give the horse a salt lick, what's going to happen when the horse licks the salt lick? It's going to get thirsty, okay? And then the horse wants the drink. So as educators, as administrators, we need to be salty. That was sort of his analogy. So enough of the background, I do, please bear with me.
One second. What was the name of the movie?
You're going to see in a second. Freedom Riders.
Freedom Riders?
Yep.
Freedom Riders.
W R.
W.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm going to play the trailer, so you can go home tonight and watch it. And then two short videos, one that kind of gives you the synopsis of his presentation, you can kind of get a sense of his, of the feel. And then lastly, sort of his explanation of being salty. I would think so, I think. Oh, that turned off, that's right.
Oh, that turned off.
I know.
In Long Beach, it all comes down to what you look like. It's all about color. If you're Latino, or Asian, or Black, you could get blasted anytime you walk out your door.
My name is Erin Guel. Schools are divided into separate tribes. I'm not standing near him.
I can't go back there alone.
Man, I don't, you ain't talking to me.
We kill each other over race, pride, and respect. We fight for our America.
What you're saying is, if the Latinos weren't here, or the Cambodians, or the Blacks, or the Whites, or whoever they are, if they weren't here, everything would be better for you.
Ladies, stop acting like you trying to understand our situation.
Why don't you explain it to me?
We in a war.
You're a first-time teacher. You can't make someone want an education. Listen to me, all of you. Stand in the line if you've lost a friend to gang violence. Stand in the line if you've lost more than one friend. Three, four, or more. In this moment on, the person you were, that person's turn is over. Everyone has their own story. We're going to write in these journals. There's no place like this out there for us. I can't go back to the way it used to be.
Nobody listens to a teenager, and they don't see the wars we fight every day. I don't even know how this feels.
She told us we have something to say to people.
No matter how dire the circumstances, no matter how dysfunctional the background, no matter how much trauma or brokenness is going on at that kid's house, when that kid... shows up in your class, in your presence, you can jump in front of his or her trajectory and alter it forever when you see me. How do you reach that kid? The one who needs a whole lot of extra social, emotional, and academic help? The one who is disengaged, despondent, sometimes disrespectful? How do you reach that kid and kids like that? So that that kid can succeed in school and graduate prepared for work in life? That kid is in your district. What could you say? What could you do? What must you or your staff understand? Who must you be to reach that kid and kids like that? If we don't reach them in positive ways, they will eventually reach you and the ones you love in negative ways. I used to be one of them. My hope is by the time I'm done, you are reminded that no matter how hard your circumstances, no matter what you think is wrong with your system or with this state, no matter what imperfections and inadequacies you feel you have, who you are right now is enough to alter the trajectory of a kid's entire life. Who you are, by the way you love them, by the way you humble yourself, by the way you let them see themselves through your teaching, by believing in them until they believe in themselves, who you are is enough. Someone's future depends on you. On you. That's why you lead. That's why we fight. That's why we're still here. That's why we show up, even on your worst day. You are your students' best hope.
Be salty, be salty, it grows out of part of my presentation and really out of a lesson I learned. You often hear people say, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make it drink. And I've learned that while you cannot make it drink, what you can do is give it a salt lick. If you give a horse a salt lick, it'll lick that salt lick. That salt lick will make it thirsty, and it will therefore make the horse drink. And so in the same way, I tell people, be salty. Be salty for the people you want to help, the students, the individuals, the community that you want to make a difference in. Be salty and inspire them to be thirsty so that they can long for the wisdom and the knowledge, or just more out of life, okay? Be salty.
Good morning, Sarah. How are we doing today?
So pardon me, felt a little bad last week as I'm listening to him. He was supposed to wrap up his session around 9:30 or so, I think it was. And then there was going to be a short break. Often at conferences, building these breaks to force us to go and talk to the vendors and interact with them. At 10 o'clock, we have our weekly construction meeting. And I had already told the team I'd be hopping on, you know, via the Teams online, and Helen Trantini, she was actually at the same conference, she was one of the vendors. And 9:30 came and went, 9:45 came and went, and I'm thinking, how do I leave this session? I'm literally crying, and he is, he was so powerful. And then about 9:55, he's still going, and I'm like, well, I'm missing a meeting.
You're missing a meeting. That's way more trouble.
So he went on for a while, but it was.
But Helen attended the meeting.
She did.
And I was there remotely.
We had the experts for us, huh?
Yeah.
Thank you for sharing that.
Yeah, that was nice.
Just a couple of things towards the end here. We do have a donation, WBC for Electrical, Universal Electric Company donated a whole bunch of wire, conduit, conduit fittings, and lighting control devices to be used for the students, which is great. Recently in the news, you know, this is a look back in the Gazette, 25 years ago, the dairy farm at Smith vocational agricultural high school is now one of 50-some farms statewide to be recognized as a dairy of distinction. The honor was awarded earlier this year as part of the Massachusetts Dairy Farm Beautification Program, so, which is great. I'm not sure when the school ended its dairy operation, but it's been within the last 25 years, is all I know. And then looking ahead, again, I think all of you are well aware now that we have these weekly construction meetings. You know that the admin team has its planning retreat next Tuesday. The following day, we, you know, the board of trustees, we're going to have our strategic planning retreat. I have a DESI commissioner update call on August 1st. That following week, I'll be down at Devon's for the MOB and planning retreat for a couple of days. And then before you know it, we're back at it. So Wednesday, August 21st, is the new staff orientation. Thursday, August 22nd, all staff return for their first day, workday. That Friday, the 23rd, is new student orientation. That weekend, so Thursday through Sunday, is the Covington Fair that is supported by the admin team. We come back that following Monday, and that's the first day of school. That Friday, August 30th, there's no school, which will give actually a very long weekend for the staff. That is Labor Day weekend is the three-county fair, which will be staffed by staff from the school. Monday, September 2nd, the campus is closed for the Labor Day. Tuesday, the 3rd, there's no, no school because of the primary elections. And then mid-September, we've scheduled the back-to-school night, I think it's a Thursday, September 12th. So we try to, we do look at North Hampton, we look at Hampshire, some of the larger city districts, to see if we can avoid conflicts. We call it back-to-school night. Most districts call it open house, but we don't call it open house because our open house, that first Sunday in November, when we bring in the community and prospective families. So when you hear back-to-school night here at Smith, you can think about open house in most districts. And then lastly, Tuesday, the 17th, is the next scheduled board of trustees meeting, assuming that there's not one in August, but we can talk about that later. With that, I'll turn it back to the chair.
Thanks, Amy. Principal's report without having a statement.
No, there's no principal. And I mentioned the staff update.
Julia, committee report.
Yeah, and I should have said this during the announcements, to let you know that I went to the M.A.S.C. Summer Institute, I've been consumed with the superintendent evaluation, which will be, I'll be sharing tonight. I'm never disappointed with the M.A.S.C. events. They're just, they're dynamite. So the first session I went to was on strategic planning, it was excellent. I have great resources. I'm looking forward to sharing those with Dr. Lincoln Hoker. On Thursday, I went to the collective bargaining session, which also, the two presenters, both attorneys, worked with different suburban districts, suburban districts, phenomenal, one MTA, AFT essentially. And then I also went to the, it was the whole, the general session was on crisis communication, which is probably the same presenter, Chris Horn. And, yeah, excellent. He's done the M.A.S.C., the conference that we go to, the joint conference in November. It was just great, you know, great. And it actually made me think about how well our team does in terms of crisis communication already, which is nice. So the, the debuilding strategic planning work that Dr. Lincoln Hoker referred to. We, at our last board meeting, we said we wanted to, the next step was to meet with the mayor and the city finance director, so that's what we did. We filled them both in on the challenges presented by debuilding and went into some detail about potential solutions. And as Dr. Lincoln Hoker said, it was informative and collaborative, and an hour and a half, about half an hour longer than I planned on. Dr. Lincoln Hoker and I agreed that we want to share part of the recorded presentation of the 2015 Donahue Institute report at our retreat next week. So I shared that resource with you all after our last board meeting. You know, the Donahue Institute is part of UMass, they did a study of Smith Oak now almost 10 years ago, presented it here. And then there was a discussion that was facilitated by then-Senator Rosenberg. So we, we are, we want to share that part of the recording during our retreat so that we have a shared understanding among all of us about the challenges. And in that discussion, the next steps were clearly identified, which we may want to consider.
Okay. You emailed me something in regards to that?
All of the trustees, yeah.
It was an email, correct?
Yeah, it was the YouTube video.
Okay. All right. So I got a.
We're going to watch, we're going to watch that together.
Some of it, or the whole thing?
We're going to watch the discussion part. The first part is a presentation of the report and.
All right. So it would be wise for me to do a little homework?
Definitely, if you wanted to, for sure.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
It's got a lot of.
And you sent that right after our last meeting, I think, right?
Yeah. I can send it to you.
No, I can find it.
Okay.
I'm going to ask you to resend it, so it's at top on my email page.
Sure. And don't feel that you have to watch it, because that discussion really captures the findings of the report and the challenges and the, you know, potential solutions. But if you want to get wonky and hear from the folks who did the research.
All right. I got it right here. June 12th, Portia.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. We should get some team.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, we're overwhelming. We did not have a policy, subcommittee.
So we're all set?
Yeah, and we, so we will, as promised, continue to report to the board anytime we do anything related to debuilding.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
I'm sure you're a person. Thank you.
Yes, exactly. I did have that comment.
The soldiers reporting, I mean, you were over.
Yeah, I went with the main thing. I spoke to him this morning, this was last year.
And your finance report is in the packet, so we can review that.
All right. I just want to follow, backtrack a second. You mentioned the sidewalks that said, building B?
B Building, where the gym is.
Where the gym is, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, and our new business may have a motion a second to approve the 24, 25 faculty manual update.
So.
Second.
We're going to discuss it, yes?
Discussion.
So I will point you to in your packet, Mr. Biaka did prepare sort of the highlighted changes. I believe Miss Blinett anticipated this.
Was in attendance, yes.
Yes, so, thank you. So as you can see, updating the calendar and dates and whatnot, updating page numbers, getting the new school logo, and then adding the vision of the graduate. This is part of the NEAC work. So what you see there is the whole description that centers around the graduate.
I'm very happy to have this in front of us right now, because that should absolutely be in the front of our minds at our retreat, right?
On the backside, there was, yeah, show the backside. This is outlining when staff have to be at campus, okay? We just wanted to sort of emphasize the attendance email that we use when an individual leaves campus and arrives back on campus. From my perspective, this is sort of twofold, and it's now to share with staff. One is obviously for HR purposes, if we have to account for various accruals, you know, we need to know when staff are obviously around campus. But then more, from my perspective, and this really came to light a few years ago, talking about crises, we had a gas leak out on Route 9, and we had to evacuate down to North Hampton High. And as you can imagine, it can be very difficult, more difficult at a vocational school with multiple buildings, not really knowing who's on campus, okay? So having this email thread that we can quickly retrieve all of the attendance emails and see who's either on campus or out of campus at any given time in the school day, for my vantage point is more of a school safety necessity. So we've been doing this for several years, but we just wanted to make sure that staff remember, you know, when they leave and return back. This avoids the need in the olden days, you probably recall, you'd have to go to the main office to sign out, okay? We avoid all of that, because again, I might be an animal science instructor down back, I'm wasting more time trying to get myself to the main office to sign out. I can just do my quick email, I'm gone, quick email, and I get back.
So the practice is, has been that folks email when they leave, but not necessarily when they return?
The practice was email when you return, but we just tried to emphasize reminding them that.
I mean, the practice, not the policy.
Oh, yeah.
So the policy was email when you returned, but the practice, not so much? And so you want to make sure of that, whatever the data contention was.
Correct.
Who monitors that email account?
So there's several of us that receive the attendance email. So those who need to have a record of it, receive that email.
Gotcha.
Yep.
That definitely makes it easier than, especially on campuses' side than having to.
Exactly.
On office.
And then this last one was, it's an opportunity to, to focus on AI, I believe, she could be through that. I honestly have a whole lot of backstory on this one, I can try my best.
Was there, where did the language come from? Do you happen to know? Like, did, was it created by our team, or does it? Because it can be really helpful when an organization proposes language to you.
I don't know.
That's right. I think it's great that we are bringing it, giving it some attention.
Yeah, giving it attention. Yep.
We are adding this too. It's part of the policy in terms of cheating and just goes to show that, you know, in terms of using AI, and what the limitations are, so.
Right. So this is, so this is in the, this is in the faculty email, about student use, staff are expected to monitor student use. Do we have a policy about faculty use of AI? Like, are, can faculty use AI to grade student work?
We don't currently have a policy that would include that.
What about in North Hampton?
Yeah, we don't have any policy, yeah. It's more so on the students' end.
Yeah. What I've read in Education Week and other kind of publications is that it can really be helpful to teachers ironically, ironically.
Less planning.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
But that would be a use that would kind of make sense for versus students generating their own authentic work.
Right, we want authentic work.
If it can help a teacher create a unique plan, teaching plan, or whatever.
Yeah.
That they may be thinking outside the box they never thought of.
I think that that was realized during the pandemic time in terms of the use of the different apps and creating those types of lessons that would be engaging to students.
Yeah. Who, would it be Mike and Melanie who would, so I'd like to, but I'm potentially interested in understanding faculty use of AI, the extent to which they use it, the characterization of it, like, are they using it for lesson plans, are they using it for grading, are they using, are they not interested in it? Would they like to know more about it? Do they have no interest in it? I'm not saying that, I'm not putting the request out there formally, but it would be interesting to know.
Should I have one of the school spotlights?
Yeah. Very helpful.
Yeah, no, it's a great idea.
Yeah, and maybe, yeah, just to sort of take the temperature of what is the current use and what is the appetite among the faculty for more, if in that.
That'd be a great suggestion.
Okay, so going back, we have a motion a second to approve the faculty manual updates. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have tabled the, until September, the facility use rate updates.
And that's for outside.
Yeah, for hiring the German and for the building.
Yeah, okay.
Why have we tabled that or postponed it?
The, Chris was not here.
I need to a little bit more than.
She's drawing down on it.
All right, quick question in regards to that. Is the church, whatever it is, religious entity, using the facility on Sundays at 10:00 and that's still active and ongoing?
Yes.
And do they pay a fee?
Yes.
Yeah.
May have a motion a second to approve. I have to read all these into the record, so bear with me. The following surplus from animal science for resale was grabbed a boot wash, from collision repair for resale, a metal bending brake, and a Miller make welder, from physical education. repair for resale, a metal bending brake and a miller make welder, from physical education for scrap, three treadmills, four elliptical machines, from horticulture for scrap, a Kubota three-point hitch bale mower, a B&amp;B three-point hitch scrapper blade, Little Wonder 11 leaf blower, Billy Goat leaf blower, wood splitter 24-inch capacity, Kubota tractor, diesel tractor, four-wheel drive B-7100, a Cub Cadet 33 mower, dual-blade 10.5 horsepower, DR Done Right field and brush mower, a Bobcat mower, Kohler 14 HP horsepower walk behind, Ford three-point hitch 938 five-foot mower attachment.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Kaling, did you, did we skip over the vote to approve payment of this year 24 invoices?
Forgot the invoices, buddy.
Oh, did I?
Nope.
Sorry. Right, good.
I was gonna say something.
Thank you. May I have a motion a second to approve payment FY '24 invoices?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor?
So I see you're using Green Environmental, Adam Lesko?
Yeah, I meant to try to get the context for that one, I don't have the context.
No, he's, he's a good guy. His dad was at Smith College Facilities back in the day, and he doesn't work for me back in the day, but, no. There's some things you don't need these big-time firms for, and he's perfect for it.
I've met him a few times, because...
So may I have a motion a second, discussion, possible action about superintendent evaluation?
I, I don't think we make a motion yet.
Okay.
I think we will have to share.
All right, I'll turn it over to Jillian.
Okay. So what I am about to share with all of you is a draft of the superintendent's evaluation. So I welcome your feedback, your input, of course. It's a composite, so my aim was to combine everyone's evaluations into this, this one report for all of you, and I hope each of you can hear yourselves in the evaluation. I'm happy to answer questions, explain the ratings, that's, the ratings were pretty easy to do, there was pretty, pretty good consensus, widespread consensus among us, all, all five of us. So I've got, we've got to read this all because it's, you know, public record, we have to read it also, I'll do that. I've got one for each of you, one for Dr. Lincoln Hooker. It's not, it's not exactly like the DESI rubric, which is pretty complex, we might use that on the next round, but, and then there's one for Ms. Carter. So starting us off right at the top here, the first page, so it's an end-of-cycle summative evaluation draft report, and you can see it's prepared by me aggregating the individual evaluations on behalf of the board. So if you wanna look at your first page there, right at the top, the overall rating for Dr. Lincoln Hooker is proficient, probably not a surprise to any of us, and proficient is, is highly complimentary, right? Like, Dr. Lincoln Hooker is doing really well at his job. I've got the goals here on the first page and then the standards on the other pages. So goal one, by June 2024, 17-month, the newsletters will be shared with families in the community, highlighting various aspects of Smithbook, including academics, vocational programs, student supports, athletics, cooperative learning, and informative articles educating the greater community around Chapter 74 and career and technical education. The newsletter we use is a more platform, enabling easy translation and data analysis to better understand those that read the newsletter and adapt, adapt the newsletter for greater impact. So the composite rating for Dr. Lincoln Hooker on this is significant progress. I think the thinking was that it wasn't the goal of 17, but well on its way, and lots of compliments for the newsletter, which you'll see when we get to the narrative. Goal two, by June 2024, 18 of the monthly superintendent's reports to the Board of Trustees will include specific information that informs the Board of Trustees of current units of instruction, projects, and topics within the academic and vocational programs. The shared information will assist the Board of Trustees when accepting a budget and creating or updating certain policy consensus that Dr. Lincoln Hooker had met that goal. And this was definitely seen as a strength of Dr. Lincoln Hooker's, as you'll see in the narrative. Goal three, by June 2024, the policy subcommittee will have been reestablished and priority policies will have been identified to review or create in order to ensure, been identified to recreate in order to ensure policy coherence related to the hiring, retention, and benefits of all school personnel, and that goal was met. So standard one, instructional leadership. The education leader promotes the learning of both of all students and the success of all staff by cultivating a shared vision that makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus of schooling. The composite rating for Dr. Lincoln Hooker in the standard is proficient. Further comments, Dr. Lincoln Hooker supports high expectations for all students and accommodations for diverse learning needs in a number of ways. The departmental spotlights provided evidence of the use of pedagogical and professional practices to provide equitable opportunities for grade level and skill-based learning, to be held there. As staff shared about their respective disciplines, the project-based learning and the incorporation of the content areas within the respective shops indicates engaging and inclusive instruction. Implementation of project-based work demonstrates opportunity for students to problem-solve real-life situations. The superintendent has overseen the expansion of course offerings to include art, Spanish, and advanced placement in several content areas. He's advocated for adequate staffing in special education and school counseling, as well as the opportunity for students to earn the state seal of high literacy. The superintendent ensures that the board is thoroughly briefed on annual MCAS scores and understands the district practices in place to promote student achievement. The NEASC accreditation process is a recent example of Dr. Lincoln Hooker's support for school administrators and instructional staff in a process of observations and feedback from an independent evaluator. And a direct quote from one of the board's individual evaluations is, "I appreciate the way Dr. Lincoln Hooker always was quick to credit and acknowledge his team, which is evidence of a strong leader. It's clear that he values and respects all students and their individuality."
Boy, you were about to say something.
I was just gonna say, moving on to standard two.
All right. Can we have any discussion in regards to this? Well, we're, I went through this and...
This is the first time we're all sitting together, yeah?
Right.
Yeah.
I struggled with it, as you know.
Oh, with the, with your own individual evaluation?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. And I read this, and I say to myself, boy, that sounds exemplary. So, I don't know if this, perk me if I'm wrong, if this is the place or not to discuss it, what would make this exemplary besides what we see here?
I will share my own professional experience as an educator, and then I would, I would call on Dr. Bonner to contribute to the extent to which you're comfortable doing it, since you have participated in so many evaluations. So as, within the educator evaluation system that the state requires educators to be involved in, which is not required, the boards can do, the school committees can do their own evaluation, DESI doesn't require it, but they do require it for educators. To be exemplary, you have to be a model in that, of that standard, essentially statewide to your colleagues, where you're helped. Proficient means you're doing everything really well. It doesn't mean like, you're just okay, it means you're doing everything really well.
You're kind of, you're kind of okay, yeah.
Exemplary means that other people in the field, in the field of education, K-12 education, vocational education leadership would point to you and say, you are a model of this.
Thank you.
I don't really need to add to that, I mean, I think you stated that, but there's also a rubric that we use in the DESI model, and it will give examples of what is considered to be exemplary versus proficient. And it really is the above and beyond.
Yeah, okay.
And that was part, we had those descriptions as, for our individual evaluations, there was like a short narrative for proficient, exemplary, the other two categories, so what we were looking at.
Right, 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 okay.
So, I'm glad you didn't want something.
Yeah, I, I would not advocate that of exemplary, the standard one.
Well, hey, this is new to me, okay? I'm learning.
I guess my analogy, and Dr. Spencer Robinson is correct, on the educator's rubric is about modeling, and that's not necessarily the superintendent's rubric, but I guess my analogy as I'm, I'm listening to this, my ability to work with the administrative team and be as successful as we are as a school is because of the team in instructional leadership, it's not because of Dr. Lincoln Hooker. Because I have such a strong team, all of this is able to come to fruition. If I had a weak team, I could not hold the school together under instructional leadership. That's just being open and honest. There's other areas where I think I'm stronger personally and professionally, that I could probably lead more directly, and even if I had a weaker team. So it's not, the rubric doesn't talk about modeling and whatnot, but I'm very grateful for what I said here, but I'm not exemplary.
And, and I wanna, yes, recall that what you have just brought attention to, which is, it's so impressive, it's really wonderful, right? Like, yeah, that's great.
And you'll see that in the next standard.
Yes.
Yes. So in the next standard, standard two, management operations, learning and growth of all students and success of all staff by ensuring a safe, efficient, and effective learning environment, using resources to implement appropriate curriculum staffing and scheduling. And the composite evaluation of Dr. Lincoln Hooker here is exemplary. His focus indicator was, indicated were environment, law, ethics, and policies, but exemplary to the overall standard. Dr. Lincoln Hooker's greatest strength as a leader is in district management and operations. He has a clear vision for updated, safe, and updated, updated, safe and appealing learning environments for all students, and is able to effectively draft human and financial resources to achieve that vision. The design, renovation, and construction of the Horticulture Building, the Companion Animal Building, the Animal Science Building, and the Pocket Pet Lab are all evidence of the superintendent's leadership in this area. These campus improvements will provide a wide variety of opportunities for students and a relevant environment for vocational learning. In addition, the partnership with a local clinic to provide a school-based health center shows the importance of student wellness as a necessary element of students' academic success. The campus-wide Keefog security system is an important contribution to student safety, while air conditioning and new windows help create comfortable instructional spaces. Dr. Lincoln Hooker has an exceptional understanding of state and federal education law and policy and collective bargaining agreements. He models appropriate compliance with these and ensures that administrators and educators comply as well. And two quotes from the individual evaluations are, "I applaud Dr. Lincoln Hooker for balancing everyday requirements of the position as well as additional duties of facilitating major construction projects on the school campus." And from a different evaluator, "You cannot put on paper every internal decision the superintendent makes daily. I want to point out that taking on the projects over the years, not just the latest large $7.5 million construction work, the daily requirements of the Locust Street campus and other SVA AHS properties are full-time jobs."
Exemplary.
Exemplary. So I hope you're taking that in, Dr. Lincoln Hooker? It's quite a list of accomplishments. Should we take a break?
No, you can continue, I can look at it. Just a quick...
Because we don't have a court.
Right. All right, all right, I'll be back real quick. I can move fast on this thing.
Recording.
Standard three, family and community engagement promotes the learning of both of all students and the success of all staff through effective partnerships with families, community organizations, and other stakeholders that support the mission of the school and district. Dr. Lincoln Hooker's focusing to cater to his communication, and in this standard, the composite rating was proficient. The monthly newsletter is an excellent example of Dr. Lincoln Hooker's regular communication with families about the overall educational experience at SVA AHS. It is culturally proficient because he has chosen a platform that can be translated into multiple languages. It is also a tool to brand and market the school. Professionally, Dr. Lincoln Hooker represents a school both locally and statewide. The superintendent takes advantage of every opportunity in the larger community to persuasively advocate for vocational education generally, and Smithbook specifically. He uses a program advisory boards and family-centered events at school to foster positive relationships with these constituencies. The network Dr. Lincoln Hooker has created with community-based organizations, nonprofits, and businesses are pivotal to providing contacts, apprenticeships, and internships for students to have experiences in the trades. Two suggestions for next year are for the superintendent to collect data around the number of recipients accessing, reading the newsletter, and to create a website that better showcases the vocational and academic offerings at Smithbook. It's regularly updated with school-related events and news, and it's easier to navigate. And a direct quote from an evaluator, "The superintendent is actively engaging with community stakeholders to bring attention to what Smithbook has to offer and always make sure that the school gets its fair share of resources." And then the fourth and final standard is professional culture. The superintendent, sorry, the standard is promote success for all students by nurturing and sustaining a school culture, reflective practice, high expectations, and continuous learning for staff. Dr. Lincoln Hooker's focus indicator was, again, communications, and the board has rated him as proficient. Dr. Lincoln Hooker's written communication with staff, families, and the board is timely, clear, and informative. One example of this is the emails related to specific events on campus that require broader publicization. His verbal communication at school events for families is welcoming and appropriately, appropriate, and he consistently portrays Smithbook in a very positive light. He communicates effectively with staff, with the staff at faculty meetings, with both written and verbal presentations, and they appreciate being kept informed about district issues. Dr. Lincoln Hooker conducted a staff survey to reflect on leadership professional practice concerning all four indicators. Dr. Lincoln Hooker networks with other professionals and participates in MAVA. He served as a former officer of the statewide organization. He's demonstrated how he keeps abreast of pertinent topics to education and especially vocational training. The superintendent reaches out to the relevant stakeholders when considering important decisions. And two quotes from different evaluators are, "Dr. Lincoln Hooker's reports at the BOT meetings are well-done and informative and keep us up to date on ongoing issues." And he does a good job of giving his professional opinion, but also asking the board to give their thoughts. And then the last page speaks to the reciprocal accountability that I wanted to include in this evaluation process, which is not just us saying to Dr. Lincoln Hooker how well he does, but for us to have a chance to look at ourselves and say, how well are we doing in supporting his leadership? So in what ways did the Board of Trustees support the superintendent to meet standards and goals? Overall, the board is supportive of the work that Dr. Lincoln Hooker has been conducting. We allow him to do the work that he was hired to perform and stay within the confines of our role as a support system, fiscal advocate, and governing body. We are also involved in one-on-one decisions with the team on discipline, meeting with parents, and solving problems to support the staff and keeping the students' needs, number one. On standard one, instructional leadership, the board supports the superintendent and the staff and students by engaging in the curriculum presentations and celebrating and attending ceremonies and competitions. There's sometimes heated dialogue regarding his proposals, and nothing is rubber stamped. Through the budget approval process, we voted to fund the positions to allow for adequate staffing in areas to meet students' diverse needs. You're welcome to contribute your input, Dr. Lincoln Hooker, as you go through these already. For standard two, management operations, the board has trusted Dr. Lincoln Hooker's vision and worked to help him move forward the new initiatives. We established a building and property subcommittee and a policy subcommittee to support the superintendent in meeting the two focus indicators of standard two. These subcommittees allow the board members to contribute in their respective areas of expertise. We also partner with Dr. Lincoln Hooker in strategic meetings with community members to advance this work. Standard three, family and community engagement. We attend school and community events with Dr. Lincoln Hooker, participate in the MAS-C Day on the Hill and MAS-C, MAS-S Annual Conference with him, and support his inclusion in quarterly department, department head meetings with city and school department. and support his inclusion in quarterly department, department head meetings with city and school departments. The board voted to move forward on community partnerships with a school-based health center and the proposed animal control building. We suggested the idea of a monthly newsletter and provided ideas for topics. Standard four, professional culture. Board members are attentive and actively engaged during the superintendent's monthly presentations. Decisions are made collaboratively at that level, with the superintendent emphasizing that it's not his call. He has an opinion and a recommendation, but it is not his decision. Board members are available to Dr. Lincoln Hooker as needed to discuss any important issues between meetings.
Well done.
Thank you.
Lot of work.
You all did, actually. It was hard, but you all made it easier because it was, you all gave me good material to work with. So what was written there does not sound like me, because it's all of us knitted together.
You wordsmithed it.
For sure.
For sure. I can see where I was in there.
Good.
Could pick out maybe who said something. But you did a great job wordsmithing it.
No, it's part of the record as far as doing evaluation. If we vote on it, then that, that's in the record that's been done.
Exactly. Yeah, and then I would change the, I would take off the draft part and I would add the L to learning, the typo.
Where, where, where is the, oh, draft at the top. Where's the typo?
Say that, Dr. Bonner.
We will need to make a motion to.
Please. Motion a second? For possible action or actually a vote on the superintendent evaluation?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the document as presented with the minor correction of the L.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good job, George. Thank you.
You're welcome. I do want to say, like, just what a pleasure it was to work with Dr. Lincoln Hooker on this. We, it was a collaborative process. It was the first time for both of us doing this. And I, for me, it was very professionally rewarding, absolutely. And I really appreciate the time that the board took to do this, because that was no small feat.
No, it was no small feat.
And I'm so glad. It's a testament to Dr. Lincoln Hooker's leadership and our support for it that we.
I concur.
Can I just say a couple words?
Please.
I'll just first begin to say, thank you. And not necessarily thank you for such a positive evaluation, which is always nice. But thank you for the opportunity to do the evaluation. I think as I, I listened to Dr. Spencer Robinson go through the draft and, you know, and the vote, I feel myself invigorated to even try harder. Because now, you know, I think sometimes you do your job and, you know, maybe you're going on a trip somewhere. You don't necessarily know your destination. Sometimes you can get lost. And having that destination of what this process looks like. And my mind's already spinning as far as next year, what can we do from the get-go to make it even better? So, thank you.
It's quite a record of accomplishment. And I feel like when people are doing a good job or a very good job, an excellent job, people just say that. And it's so important to name all of the things that they are doing.
Or you're documenting everything. And that's, like you said, verbal word. It's gone. What's, it's out of your mouth. But when it's documented like this.
It's a lot.
It tells the story of this gentleman and his educational value, what he's brought to this school. He keeps saying to everybody when he stands up, it's the best job he's ever had and he's not leaving. I'm going to take him to task on that, because this makes him look like to be available that everybody would want to steal him from us. And I have to put out that voice that you're staying in.
I'm glad you find it invigorating and inspiring. That's awesome. That's great.
And I hope part of it is, is the support of the board that's helping that process and those feelings.
I feel this particular board, and I know, you know, life goes on and board members unfortunately turn over, superintendents turn over. But this particular board, you each bring something to the table. You each have a skill set, strengths, and you hold me to, you know, accountable for those, which I really do respect and appreciate. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Chairman.
Future business. July thirty-first, we have our Board of Trustees Strategic Planning Retreat here in the library at twelve P M. September seventeenth, regular board meeting, five P M. in the library. September eighteenth, the General Advisory Committee meeting, seven A M. in Oliver Smith's restaurant. October fifteenth, regular Board of Trustees meeting. October sixteenth, Program Advisory Committees meeting, six P M. in the cafeteria. And I have to ask.
Oh, I'm sorry. I want to advocate for Ms. Fairman for a second. So as you can see, we don't have an August meeting set, and I strongly support that. But there is an outside possibility that we may have more invoices that we have to have approved between now and the next board meeting. And I just want to put out to the board for discussion how we want to handle that. I think there's ways to handle that minus an official board meeting. There may be a way electronically. If we have it, get it out to the whole board. You can review and approve, kind of like what you do with contracts. Or we set a meeting, and that meeting could be very specialized. It could be very quick. It doesn't need enough to be five o'clock. But I just want to make sure that from the business office perspective.
Right.
We continue to pay the bills.
Yeah, we had a brief discussion at last meeting. So I like your suggestion and trying to figure this out remotely in some way. But we'll do, I, I will do what I need to do to make this happen.
I think the packets is the way to go, and then we can, we can, yea or nay, whatever, future discussion.
Thank you.
All right, come on.
Oh, okay. I'm so sorry. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Second.
Second, so move.
Thank you, everybody.
Putting them away.